Well, since it's pretty much quiet, I guess we'll be straight. Uh, I'll go earlier, the Tuesday, October 10th, State Council Work Session. First thing I need is an approval of the agenda.
Do I have to approve the agenda for the session?
Second.
Collage paper?
Yes.
Okay, first item, introduction. Jim?
So you remember not long ago, we sent Fredwell Cruz, FYI, he's still on help with our little bit. And this is Cruz's replacement. And I want to introduce you to Kathy Levante. She comes from Wal-Wal most recently. She worked at Rice in thirty years, I believe, pretty close to it, and was a construction man inside the company. And her breadth of supervision went from the east coast, west, to Hawaiian Islands at times. And so she's well versed in public utility in the right way, or private utility in the right way. And she's jumping right in. And her particular items where she'll be covering are contracts, procurement, and then doing all this stuff that we get phone calls. When you check this ditch here, or about a tree there, and so on. And so she's skirting around, working in town pretty well, looking at all of our calls. And I want to say, for Karen, as you get to know her, she has the most enthusiasm. She's really hit the road running, and she's really connecting with the folks. And I think it's just going to be a great opportunity. We're glad she's here, and looking for a long time with us, and looking forward to it. I told Karen, okay, you can talk, you can't talk as long as me, so I'll just sound out.
Just glad to be part of the team. It's not quite as fun as wine making, but it's close. The trees makes it exciting, you know? But no, I'm enjoying it, and like boss says, I've jumped in two feet forward and neck deep in it, and having a good time. Just glad to be part of the team, hope that I can bring a great benefit to the city.
Thank you. And she and her husband live in Cana Beach, her husband has a shop downtown.
Cana Beach Design Company.
Right, I think she was just kind of twiddling her thumbs and unfortunately answered the call.
Boss said, get out of the house and go find something to do, so here I am. Nice to meet all you guys, know many of you, and can't wait to interact with you a little bit more.
Thanks, Jim. Next item, Melissa, I got about the wheelchair.
Yes, I am. So I'm actually going to let Puka talk about the wheelchair just for a minute. But before Puka does that, I want to reintroduce Puka. Puka Rice is our new, three months ago, for outreach coordinator for ATRAP, a brand new position as of this year. In the past three months, she has written eight grants, but three more in the works. She's partnered with six new community groups in our community, and up to Astoria, down to Garibaldi. And she has started eight new fundraising initiatives, one of which includes making beautiful jewelry. Apparently, we're twinsies tonight. Uh, making some new jewelry out of the reclaimed microplastics that we clean up in those microplastic screenings, and reclaimed jewelry pieces as well, so.
Melting together.
So we fill the microplastics, rubs and molds. Puka's an artist as well, she has an art background and a technical writing background. And so she is just doing way more than I ever anticipated anybody could do in this position, let alone three months. And I'm not kidding, she's just incredible, she's really wonderful. And she jumped right in, and one of her first initiatives that I asked her to kind of restart again was those wheelchair initiative stuff. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, when I first came on, I just immediately bit my teeth into the trouble of working grants. And in the process of researching, discovered that the Chamber had been working on a grant for some time. So partnered with them, and over the course of that, we actually received funding locally sufficient to purchase our first chair, and subsequently enough funding to purchase a second. We've had nine people in this past week so far that it's been available for use that have checked it out, or calling regularly to do so. It's just amazing, the response that we received from the community. It's such an incredible, incredible community we have engaged, really proud to be a part of it. I want to thank you all for your continued support of our program.
How are we finding out about Puka?
So, um, there is a, uh, there's a listing that's going to be posted. It's not already up the Police website, as well as with the Visitor Center on our Chamber website. And I know that it is in process, I've been talking with Jim, who just took over from Corr, and also here, Alicia and Kari have been working on our site as well.
And on the city website?
If it hasn't been...
Kari Hengsgard is our new communications coordinator, and she is working on adding it to the website. We were first thinking about adding it to the PD portion of the website, and then realized it needed its own page. I think people have heard about it through, you know, different coverage that's been given to it.
Thank you.
And by word of mouth, there's a lot of people who are really invested in this locally, and their donations have been incredible. And then PD, they have given so much time that it's become overwhelming. So we're going to start working on some new, not necessarily policy, but setting up some new rules on how it's checked out, and who's checking it out, just because it's been taking up all of Laura and Val's time. Jason's been so kind and trying not to like make it a big deal, but we know that their time is really important elsewhere. And so if we can help out and give some of our employees time, or make sure we maybe budget for some more time next year, just so we can keep checking it out, because there are nine checkouts in a week period. There's obviously a huge need, we thought this might be like a once a month thing, like it is in Manzanita, it's, you know, a handful of times a year. But there's so many people who are interested, who are written on our Facebook, written us emails, called and asked about it. And it's been PD who's been relaying all this information and checking out the wheelchair. We've been kind of going and dusting it off and trying to help, but we really need to get some sort of plan in place to make it a little bit easier on them.
You're working on other grants, too.
I've called it hours available. Recently, I thought it was just going to be during the time that the volunteers were at the rock. But it's anytime, anytime within those hours.
I wonder if the beach to be accessible during any time. We don't have a chair available after five o'clock during the peak season, during the winter. It's only available to check out till four, so we can get back at five. And we've already had just a few concerns about people wanting to check it out during the evening. But obviously, we're not to that point yet, we can't have people checking it out in the evening, it's a liability issue, too, and it's not that safe. So there's been a few voice frustrations, but it seems like it's going well, and people are just so grateful to have this. And so having a second chair will make it much easier in the checkout room for us, having that available. What are you going to say?
I'm wondering if we need to qualify it, I mean, if somebody just wanted to take it out for fun?
No, everybody who's asked to use it, it's been a real need. They either drop off their chair there. That is a good question, because I heard Counselor Benefield was just going to take it out for a ride with his dog. Yeah, riding down the doomsday, I heard. Some real stuff here, some real things going on. Anyway, we haven't had any sort of concerns. When they come and check it out, they sign a policy, an agreement saying, you know, you're expected to maintain the condition of the chair. They're not like financially liable, but they are, you know, they do sign an agreement saying they're not going to go do any crazy things. They're not going to take it out the rock.
Pretty similar to the same release that they use in Manzanita. We added a few things, just to make it a little tighter, because of some concerns that we had here locally. I feel like our beach is a little more dynamic than theirs is there, so that was, you know, something we wanted to account for as well. So extreme weather would not be permitted to be checked out during those instances for obvious safety reasons. But it's literally the same release otherwise, that they've been using for ten years now.
Puka worked extensively on making sure, on checking different insurance, and checking in with Manzanita and other cities who have come up with a policy for wheelchairs.
So that may have been added to our insurance policy.
Sure closely with Tammy and Jason, came up with a ton of documents as well.
Do we know if it floats?
Well, it's not a truck. We actually have, um, in the verbiage, they're not allowed to give into the water for safety reasons. Technically, it can go into the water up to four inches, but for obvious safety reasons, we don't even want to suggest that that is a possibility.
I can tell you, right now, it's a little upside down.
Yes, it very much looks like flotation tires, similar to what we use on our trailer. We have flotation tires in the back of our trailer, and they're kind of just similar to this. So I'm sure it kind of, you know, hovers on in some wet sand pretty well, so. Specifically designed in the United States. And Public Works also helped us out putting it together, they were very generous at the time.
Have you or anybody taken down a Porsche with somebody in it on this hard sand or soft sand?
I have not, however, we pushed the people around down there. I went to speak with Jeanette, pulled in, and when I was sitting down with her, there was a family that was wheeling it on the beach.
The reason I ask is that, you know, they make those really fat tire mics, and they're not nearly that, they're still quite fast. And I've read those on the piece of the soft sand, and found that I was under the impression that I was going to be able to just, you know, cruise up and down the soft sand. That's not the case. So I think we just need to be careful not to make people think that this thing, you know, floats over saltwater, the soft sand, if it really doesn't. And I hadn't used it, so I don't know, is why I'm asking.
Hard pack sand was really the best terrain for that.
We haven't heard any feedback yet, but we'll keep that in mind, and this was, we considered, and Puka did all the research and considered different wheelchair types.
Yes, she looked at a whole bunch of, this is the same variety that they use down in Manzanita and down in Golden Gate, so for all of their six different beaches, the same one. They were using a different one for a while, and then discovered that this particular manufacturer's build held out better to the test of time, and saltwater and what have you, so they switched over to this. And he really strongly recommended spending a little bit more for this versus the cheaper models that some other manufacturers will sell, because he was finding that it was costing him more in the long run to replace those than with these.
How much did they cost?
With, the first order was twenty, it was twenty-five hundred for just the base chair, so what you're looking at right here is twenty-five hundred dollars.
And where did you get the donation?
Um, here locally, from a variety of different people, so Martin, uh, Martin Hospitality, Ray Schneider, Corr and his wife donated, Melanie, uh, Melody, I'm sorry, from Lost Art Design. The Chamber, yeah.
Who else?
Alana with Remax, Postwo Advantage. There were some really generous donations, it was really impressive, not a dime of taxpayer money in front of this.
Back to the soft sand, I would suggest, and we suggest to the users, that it pushes much easier on the hard sand.
Yes, I would agree.
We'll attempt to stay on the hard sand, so we'll figure that out very quickly.
Yeah, it's not going to take long. Just walking in soft sand is a challenge.
I did have some things on the contract that I wanted to bring up, is this a good time, or is there more presentation?
No, go on. There's some editing.
Yeah, there's some editing necessary to contract.
Uh, these are not, I should have sent, there's some new verbiage that we had to come up with, like right after I sent it to Colleen, because we had to change, um, a few different things, just two different things. I think we had to change time and letting people know about severe weather. We will not check out the chair if there's any severe weather, warning, in, for in the beach. So we did go through and do some editing since then, but go ahead and tell us your edits.
Well, that is on now, on the contract, number two, it says beach access, uh, beach use only. So there's some work, some work that needs to change there, I think it must be, um, the chair is for beach use only, and must stay out of the water. Anyway, that sentence doesn't make sense, it just says beach access are for beach use only. This doesn't make sense to me. Then right, number three, right below that, we say, um, user understands equipment must not be loaned, given, sold or sublet to any other person or persons, or taken on the city of Cana Beach area without prior written consent of the city. I don't think we should have had that last phrase in there, I think we should just say that it can't be done. And obviously, if they want to, they're going to ask, but I don't think we suggest that they can come and, you know, ask to do that. So I think it just, it just, it may occur to suggest it, but you don't need to do that. So just remove the part where it says, "without prior written consent of the city." Then on number seven, there's another wording problem, where it says, um, at the end of the second sentence, "reasonable wear of the chair accepted and in clean shape of paying necessary fees to restore the equipment." So that needs to be words differently, because it doesn't make sense as it were.
It looks like there's part of the sentence that's missing. I guess it talks about pay and then talks something else.
Then, uh, when we, uh, when we fill out their information, I think we should definitely get a cell phone, because we don't have their home phone.
We are right now.
So my suggestion is that instead of just saying phone, it says cellphone, and then it says other phone. So we want a cellphone, and if there's another phone, like a person with them, or their home phone, whatever. So I think we should have two phones, and I also think we should get their email.
We did get right now.
Okay, if I'm correct, that's why I'm going to have their email.
Yeah, Laura's been making sure we can respond to them very well.
Then, uh, on the wheelchair return, this is on how to take care of it. Being a longtime bicyclist on the beach, I've taken care of different bicycles that have survived different lengths of time, thirty years. And it says hose spray completely with fresh water after use. It shows, I think it says soft spray, you know?
We changed that verbiage, yeah.
One thing you don't want to do, in fact, you want to eliminate the second part, it says a positive use air compressor. You don't want to drive the sand into the bearings and into the, into the inside, you want to soft spray it, so all the sand and saltwater settles down and drips off of it. And then you don't want to dry it, and you don't want to hard, you don't want to have a hard sprayer, like a pressure washer, even a hard spray. This is what I learned, and what I've been told by bicycle people, the bicyclists out around here, is soft spray it, and then towel it off, and then dump air pressure or pressure washer.
Yeah, we just found out, Puka talked to, um, manufacturer, Manzanita, and they actually said that what they were doing was using a compressor, that was actually working better for them than hosing it, uh, which is why we went to that. But it sounds like you've got some personal experience.
It does blow it off quickly, but it also forces it into crevices that it would have never gotten on its own without that pressure. So you're forcing solvent water and sand into crevices that it wouldn't get to otherwise.
We changed the verbiage, so we took out pretty much all of that verbiage. We realized that if the material gets wet with fresh water, that it can actually break down more quickly. And most likely, this isn't going to be really getting that wet in the sand.
Because the fact that this is stainless steel and rubber, it should do very well.
So we said either wipe down with a soft crystal brush, or with a towel, so that's what we changed it to.
And then...
Nancy?
At the beginning, where it talks about equipment, City Kennedy, you put checkout release, it says agreement. So if user, it says user understands, so there should be, it should be understands.
We've all been busy, we've been trying to make this happen really quickly, and this has probably passed through, like Tammy and Laura and myself, so I'm trying to get it done as soon as possible. Yes, thank you.
And then I have the same one we had on, hey, what was something else?
Oh, you're welcome.
I think that's it.
A question to the user, that the attendant, or is that the person?
The user is the person who's checking it out, the person who's...
The person who's checking it out.
The person who's using the chair. And then they normally have somebody there to assist, they always have somebody there.
They have to, because it's not self-propelled.
And we make our plans.
I just wondered, you shouldn't have signature and information for both the attendant, you know, I mean, some, some users are not going to be able to even read the contract, but won't take responsibility.
So maybe do user slash attendant.
Or user slash responsible person.
Responsible person.
Responsible partner, or if the user's a child, is that consideration?
Yeah, definitely, it is.
What kind of variable item do you have that you can leave behind?
Normally, it's their chair.
Their chair?
Because they'll leave their chair.
We didn't want to make this something where they, it had been brought up that they leave their credit card behind, but I really, this is something that has been funded through donations, that will be continued to be funded through donations. And I didn't want to make it have some sort of monetary kind of value association with it, some leaving their card. This isn't about necessarily the money, it's people who really need to use this chair. That would take more time, we would need to come up with more paperwork, we would need to run that through Tammy. It would just be a lot more effort for a variable.
Also, I think there's some liability in holding their credit card, because if some, if somebody goes over their number, they could see it like that.
Exactly, that's where the policy of our heart recommends, so it would just be a lot more work, and, um, what if, what happens though if they don't have a wheelchair to leave behind? If they can't really walk their long beach. Um, so what happens sometimes is that the person who's pushing the wheelchair will come pick it up from City Hall, and this is what Laura told me. And they'll push it down to where they're meeting somebody in their car, and they'll help them out.
But what do they leave behind?
They don't leave, leave behind anything.
Oh, they don't have valuable...
They're not required to leave behind anything.
And that's another example of where they...
But they do sign this contract.
Signing the contract.
Exactly, so we do still have...
Do you check ID, driver's license?
Yes, yes.
I think that would be a security thing for us, is that we don't register anybody without seeing ID, and we write down the driver's license number, so that if it doesn't come back, we have a legal way to find that.
They do check it at the PV, and they have them leave their license there with them, like ID, so we know who has it.
Think about leaving a driver's license, if there's only one person with a license, now they're driving around town without a license.
They aren't driving, they go straight down Gallow, you know?
But sometimes, they don't have to, right? Couldn't they throw it in their car and drive down to another access?
No, they're always taking it out Gallow right now.
But they don't have to, we're not requiring that.
They shouldn't be taking it outside of Cana Beach.
They should take it down to Tolu, they're not, they're not ready.
They could, because theoretically, yes, they could go down there.
Again, this is going to be a process that evolves as we learn different things. We've tried to come up with the best policy, the best rules, based on what Manzanita is doing, what some places in California are doing, what CSI has done. And as these things come up, we can definitely put things in place, but I think right now, they're not huge concerns. I've never heard of a wheelchair being stolen from any of the other places before. And obviously, being precautionary is always smart, but I think we have enough things in place to make sure we're not going to have an issue. But they could, they could.
Do we have insurance on it for worst case?
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we tried very hard to make as much as we could what was existing, and we learned from their mistakes. You know, they've thought ten years under the belt, it was Zach Berger in Manzanita, and Golden Gate also has quite a bit of experience as well. So learning from what they've already been through, and building on that, I think we're going to have ultimately a better program. It'll be tighter than what they offer, and I know that to some degree, we have to be, because we have a more dynamic beach than they do.
I found the last, the other one, on number eleven at the very end, this is, this is just my new, this is, this is the editor in me. Um, it's the, the last part of that sentence, or suitability of the equipment for the use user intends, there should be an asset. See, I told you, it's really tight.
No, it's good, just to make sure.
Interesting, I feel like I should spend a lot of these time in Manzanita. Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you all, I'm glad you're all so involved, yeah, we appreciate it. Anybody in the room?
Next item is the Repriser Report, so we're a few minutes...
Meeting schedule.
Jim? Yeah, Colleen will probably ship in as well, but if you remember back in September, we talked about the possibility of having meetings between yourselves and various committees. And I think what you see before you is a tentative schedule for your discussion, you want to do that, and we can pass that information on to the committees. And at that time, we're asking them, their annual report will be due by the end of the year, and we provide that to you, so you can see what they've accomplished, what they've done, what they hope to do, along with, um, any kind of statutory things that they are tasked to do, and then your discussion about where you like them to work, and their responses to ideas that they have as well. So what you have are just simply tentative schedules for the work sessions in those various months. There was one questionnaire in January where you have Tourism and Arts, that's the month that you guys actually will be doing your goal setting. That one may want to be pushed back, what you set your goals in January, and you could move that to a later date, or combine it with maybe another, another work session. But that's otherwise your consideration.
Yeah, it's just that, you know, the last time that council met was Tourism and Arts, it was, they've met twice since I've worked here, and both times were like special meetings. It took a very long time, because they really went over the guidelines, and the agreement, and, and the goals of Tourism and Arts. So to, to combine that with another group might be too much in one evening, but my concern was that if we put it on the January work session, that's just the second Tuesday in January, and you've got to, you wouldn't have had time to meet in your goal session to figure out, you know, your stance on what you would like to see. So, um, we can either shift them all down, you know, start in February, or there would, there's always the option of having like a, a special work session with them later in January, that would keep you on target, um, because there's always other things on the work sessions, too, besides, besides the advisory boards that are coming up. So it's just something to think about, and, um, you don't have to vote or anything, but if you agree to...
It would, it would be helpful if that schedule works for you guys, and we can begin notifying our committees.
Another one I've been talking about is EFR, because it defunct right now.
It is.
And it would be good to move that up somehow, so that we could talk more about how to fix it, rather than, so, you know, work with the folks.
I was hoping we'd have some members by the time we got to them, and, because we only have two members right now.
And fixing it would help get us some members.
It might, yeah.
So that's the only one that I can see, that I'd like to either pump up or pair with one of the other ones, that might be best.
One of my, one of my thoughts in terms of, um, when to do these, would be that those which are budget mine items, like handles on the agenda prior to where we, where we're going to budget, for some designers doing planning commissions, those are good to buy, because it's after budget, they're not going to affect the budget anyway. But, um, EFR probably, I mean, there is some expense there, and, uh, Public Works, Parks, Farm Market, Tourism, those are all budget mine items. So I'd like to see those, you know, maybe the priority, the biggest budget line item at the top, so we get to that first.
It kind of does it right now.
I thought, I thought we kind of put them in that order.
Well, yeah. I think maybe just, maybe it'd be a special, um, session in January for Tourism and Arts.
That might be the best way to do it, except for the fact that, you know, the goal setting session would be a special meeting. So that would be, but to keep Tourism and Arts at the work session, and then do a goal setting as a special meeting.
But you wouldn't have had a chance to meet, to decide what you wanted to talk to Tourism and Arts about. Or if you're just talking about the title of them, well, that's, yeah, you know.
I kind of, we'd rather hear from the Tourism and Arts, and then have the goal setting, to see how they, how we feel about their input. After we met with them, I don't know how many else would feel about that.
I was thinking, probably, at this point, we've got to start somewhere, I'm thinking that in the next year, we're going to have these same committees report at the end of the year, and then we can land our goal setting plan, just if, if we haven't had it at all. So let's just get them before us, hear their report, and, I don't know, what report? So I think you still need to have it, something close to the schedule.
What about December?
December's so hard to get.
Everybody, you know, it's lost, but, but I don't know, it's a possibility.
Well, Tourism and Arts are meeting on Friday, and that, the big thing they're tackling at this meeting is to work out their annual report to give to you, so you'd have it in time for your, for your goal setting, because you'd get the reports from all of them before the goal setting. So you'd have all the reports, plus all the ordinances that describe how the committees are now, and then you could kind of come up with your uniform idea of what you want to do, and then when you meet them, with them, um, you all have had a chance to be thinking about it before you meet with them, and then when they come up with different ideas, you can, you know, take them or leave them.
No, I think we're okay, I, I'm, I can work with this.
I do think we need to have a separate section, session for Tourism and Arts Commission, because I think that could be a big topic. It might take a lot of time, um, in one session, when they have everything to work and to deal with. It might take a lot of time, you know, one session on the other things to work with and to deal with.
Well, at this point, we just leave it on this schedule and be closer. We can decide whether they have a special session for that or a special session for.
But I think they should be the first ones.
Yeah, I agree. The only comment I have is we've talked about using the term advisory board and you're here calling them all committees. At some point, I think it is appropriate to change it officially to Tourism and Arts Advisory Board, etc. Although that may be, that's a condition.
And, yeah.
Public Works Advisory Board, Parks Union Services Advisory Board. I think we can address that when we meet.
I've been doing it myself trying to say advisory board.
I understand.
I'm doubling over. It is going to be a long haul to get a great understanding of the difference.
Well, maybe just, the planning commission is a commission, design review board is a board, and I guess advisory board is a board.
They make final end use decisions unless they're appealed to you, so they're, they're not just advisors.
So I think, I'm talking about Tourism and Arts Commission, that's TAC.
Well, they, that's in the ordinance.
Yeah. So the only one that would be effective would be the Public Works Committee, and that is the advisory board. Parks Union Services would be the advisory board. Farm and Market Committee. All the other groups, those are both the, well, like committees.
And that's a state.
It's a formal, and I think that's the correct name. I guess I'd ask administration to take a look and maybe address some issues without, start getting terms used and problematic.
We can have a, an answer about that at, at your goal setting so that you know, you know, maybe some research on why they have to be a commission or why they have to be a committee. Or can they be, you know, which ones can be in that advisory board?
Okay, so we're good with the schedule? I think we need to take a look at the response. Thanks, Jim. Move on to, is it Mark?
So over the past two years, you've heard Dan Grassek and then more recently me talking about this transportation system plan and the grants we've applied for. Applied twice and have not been awarded a grant twice. We live in a very competitive district. They're awarded by ODOT district. I don't know if I'm aware of whether they just told us there's more requests and there's funds. We've kind of put off some decisions or kind of put some decisions into the context of that transportation system plan that now is not going to go forward during this current fiscal year. Question is, is what do you want to do? Do you want to wait for another round of funding or try some scaled down version of this? The field's kind of open for you. It's a shortcut. There is no money in the budget. We budgeted for this this year, but we were budgeting on a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars of grant income, which is.
Can you summarize those things we put off waiting for the grant?
A lot of the harder decisions in the annual parking plan, we said, let's deal with that as part of the transportation system plan. The reconfiguration of the Warren Way, hemlock intersection is underway, but it's kind of in a temporary test design right now. Depending on the outcome of that, that's also something that, in terms of a final decision, would have been dealt with in the transportation system plan. Those are the two things that foremost in mind. Oh, actually the downtown parking work we took out and then postponed. And that was also something that might have been dealt with in the transportation system plan, but now at least in the short term won't be.
If we address the, the Toluca Intersections with Warren Way, is that something that requires ODOT's approval for whatever we do?
I'm going to defer to Jim on that.
Are you talking on hemlock?
Yeah.
That would be ours.
If we put a traffic circle or we put four-way stops or.
Yeah, that's all our right of way. Now, once you get out towards the interchange, of course, that's different. But if you're talking about where we've got the candles out there, that's ours. That's our decision.
Okay. Well, we can go ahead with those things. I think they need to be done. Is the same answer good for putting a three-way stop sign at Sunset and Hemlock?
Yes. But you may want to take a look at traffic volumes to see if that makes sense to do a three-way stop sign at that location.
Have you tried to drive through there?
I'm just saying.
Okay, we'll do the study.
Yeah. But, you know, either of those that you talked about are not huge.
No, that's what I'm thinking.
You would need a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to tell you.
No.
Really not, you want to put in a three-way stop sign or what you want to do with the candles out there.
I guess the other thing, if we got the grant and we do, we could look at traffic flow through downtown, whether one-way couplets make sense. Or changing the parking angles and a lot of other things that we're not willing to stand our own judgment on.
I guess to Mark's point, as you decide where you want to go, is you could pick out those three or four things you'd like some information on and, and fund it yourself. And I don't think it would come anywhere close to a hundred and thirty-five thousand. I don't think you have to wait for that grant to do some of the things you may want. However, if you then want to pay for them, depending on what those are called for, like it might be something you have to wait for grant funding.
What was a hundred and thirty-five thousand for?
Would have been to hire a consultant to prepare our transportation system plan.
Now, Seaside had to go forever to get before it got funding, remember? And so it doesn't surprise me that we haven't gotten it yet. And I think it's going to be two or three more years of waiting to get a plan. But I, that, that was the experience in Seaside and they're so much larger and have so many more problems than we do. But I think, I think we're just going to be dead in the water for a while because you have to kind of stand in line and wait your turn. So I, but I don't want to put off doing some of these things either.
And I would call by Mark's command of this, but I think the advantage of having that plan is it puts you in a better position to get grant funding in the process. If you don't get the plan, then you're back to paying for it yourself, but so.
You have to show, if I understood it right, because I kind of followed that process in Seaside. And as I understood it, you had to kind of show that you were working on a plan, that you had some things in place that you wanted to do. So hiring a consultant, you know, you have to do something before you can actually hire a consultant to do it. It's, you know, you have to start before you start, start. And so I think that really would show that we had some intention of doing it and we were serious about it.
How much did we pay for our parking study?
It was a maximum of fifteen thousand. He's, he's under budget and is kind of on tap, I guess, for the rest of it, although that contract may be up here shortly.
Yeah, I guess, there's a different options. I think we should go ahead and apply for it again.
Okay.
But I don't think we should hold off any of the projects that I've probably addressed.
Okay, well, we will come around again.
Whatever, baby.
This winter, so.
I have Public Works and Streets, make some recommendations along with the Police Department. Maybe know better than anybody else, what the issues are.
It would be an issue that's, maybe we can help you with this.
I know the planning commission does the parking studies every year.
Colleen, actually what I hope is if we did get the TSP, we can kind of fold in a parking planning component into that. It's all the Public Works Committee also, in some of that, because the planning commission has been somewhat awkward when they, why are we dealing with this? This isn't stuff we normally deal with. So if we, if we made that more of a joint endeavor with the Public Works Committee. And that's something we can do on our own too. But I, that's again, one of those things I was kind of holding off until we had a TSP.
Well, at least to ask various folks to highlight things so that we have then a choice to figure out which ones are the more ones that we could work with independently. Maybe even lead to the fact that we are trying to do something and ended up giving it a grant.
So for the remainder, remainder of this year, we continue moving forward on those projects that are underway and get in line for the next grant cycle. That's all I want. Thank you.
Wow, that's easy. I don't know, we have nothing left except for the order. Mark had Tom.
So the design review board will meet on the nineteenth. One of their items is, there's a possibility it'll be appealed to you. And I'm concerned that we'll run over the hundred and twenty day limit. Hundred and twenty day limit on that would be the twenty-fifth of November. But if, if the design review board acts on the nineteenth and somebody waits out the appeal period, appeals on the last day, there won't be enough advertising time to get that on your eleven fourteen meeting. So what I would like to do is kind of preemptively schedule that for your eleven fourteen meeting, advertise it. If they file the appeal, then still meet the hundred and twenty day rule limit. If they don't file the appeal, it's canceled. I don't like to do that, but in this case, because of the time limit, I would ask that you allow me to do that.
Is there any other downside to it? Could we just explain?
Well, it's going to cost us something, a couple hundred dollars to send out those notices.
And you're pretty sure, does this like be appealed?
No, but I think there's a, a strong possibility that it will be. I can't see the future any better than you can, but I think that.
The DRA has already made their decision, right?
No, they'll make theirs on the nineteenth.
You can see if they're waiting.
Yeah, I've watched it. I've watched thirty-five years of these, so.
And you're sure they're preparing to make a decision? They're not going to.
I guess they'll stay in this room at this table till they make a decision because they're really out of time. The design review board is pretty good about that, so I'm not worried about that part of it.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. Okay, then I will go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Colleen had a couple scheduling items.
Hi. I just wanted to remind you that next week's, you want to do it?
Yes, next week on the seventeenth at three-thirty, we have the special meeting that will be going over several things that need a vote. Public Works and then also the announcement of the finalists. And then later that afternoon, five fifteen, five forty-five, Susan Von Meche will be here to meet with elected officials. And then she'll be going to the chamber and doing a presentation there.
So she's going to meet here first, correct?
Five fifteen, five forty-five.
Should we phone you?
Special meeting.
I don't know, did you all see the, the notice from John Schmidt about the Region One Mega Borgan Cities?
Yes.
Meeting on the third of November. And if you do intend to go, just let him know and you could CC me on it so that I know too. But they do a head count because they do provide lunch. So if you're going to go, I believe it's in, it's in Lincoln City. So it's lunchtime and the different Region One cities get together and talk about common problems and, and ideas and things. It can be pretty, pretty good. And then I just want to remind you all tomorrow to be here at twelve-thirty. Because for a short briefing with Jensen Strategies before the first interview starts at one. And you'll be in the council, the conference room. And we will have something to tide you over because it is pretty tough being in interviews all afternoon without something to eat, so. And then the next day on Thursday, of course, it'll start, first interview starts at eight-thirty, so please be here around eight or shortly thereafter so that you're all ready at eight-thirty and then we will supply lunch on Thursday too.
Great, thank you. Yeah, anybody else have anything for the other?
I just question, I think everybody got a email from Maria Vogel regarding any kind of information on the welcome poll. I thought it was an aisle debate, made all the hoopla about it, had special artists do it and replaced it and they all signed blah blah.
Got to tell them what it was about.
Nobody knows where it is. So I, so maybe one way to handle this is to forward that email to the Parks Committee, Parks Advisory Board. And the suggestion that respond to the council or respond to it late.
That was a, a goal, a project that the Public Arts Group did with the city manager, so Parks hadn't been involved really in, in that. Except that Robin Mercy does serve on both.
Oh, was that it?
Yeah, so it was one of those public art, ten thousand dollar public art things that we do each year.
Well, how about, I could send it to Robin.
Yeah, yeah.
Send Robin.
There's a reason, there's a reason why there was no signage. We actually had money and all that for the signage, but we had to take it to the design review board. And the design review board, Under Mike Morgan, said that until there's a maker's plan for the whole park area, that he did not want to have any more, anything said yes to. So we were denied the ability to put up the signs. Until.
Feel it.
But.
So we tried.
It would still have to go through the design review.
But I agree, there should be a listing plaque saying who's the artist, you know, what, what it. Brief description of why it's there, what it represents. I think they're not in right on the pedestal, you know, I.
I don't think it would hurt for the parks. I think they're appropriate to work with the arts group to say, what do we need to say on it? Start the process.
Yeah.
That would be a good start and a few words from there, at least then we could respond to the person who was concerned. Even if we had a handout of, of the information.
If the design review board said want to wait, well, maybe they didn't know it was going to be years before they had that.
I don't think they did, yeah.
I'd be happy to contact Robin and not hurt since it kind of crossed both of, both areas and then let me look at that.
There are some folks around that would probably be able to write us something very informative, just to have a handout. I think that would be a good start.
Just have a little issue there that people could pull on.
Well, it doesn't have to be there. I mean, it could be, like I said, if the information's, if somebody's concerned, I mean, at least that would begin, begin the process. And eventually we could have a plaque on it or a full-on kind of one of Saturday cast kind of gizmos down there somewhere, once the plan is set.
I was in Tom's restaurant, Fish and Chips recently, and was told that there would be a reward for Tom on October twenty-eighth at eleven o'clock at the North Coast.
Family Fillet Ship.
Fillet Ship. Did you hear that?
Thank you. Any else?
Okay, so I raised the question, the issue was another series you mailed from Dave Prog on the opposition to Foxore in downtown. I don't know what correspondence, I know there's been correspondence. I've looked at Mark. I've been through two elections on it and legal, but I would maybe like to hear some response to claims that it's a violation of our comprehensive plan. Which I know is just subject to interpretation, but I wonder how best we could feel whether it should be opened up again. Should be placed on the agenda again. Is there any point to it to kind of be totally debound to granting a building permit and a business license? You know, frankly, I'm uncomfortable with it. I was trying to propose that we restrict downtown by the time, place. I'm going to put that together, but it kind of got shouted down that it would be showing the bare tiz of the one part and not the other part of town. But nevertheless, I suppose the parties in opposition, I think, go ahead and sign it or get it. I suppose the parties in opposition, I think, go ahead and sign it or get a petition around and get it on a ballot. But I don't know if even the state would allow that. I know we had it one time opt out. But I don't know if that means you can no longer ever opt out on this as a city, even if the petition would be successful and the vote were successful. I'd like to have some discussion on those options. And I don't feel people have response to the emails, which I think have been very well drafted and very courteous of why, which is nice.
Question, is it even appropriate for us to be discussing this as part of the agenda?
Well, what we're talking about is whether to put it on the agenda. Kind of that's the how we do this. Good to the order or good for assigning things for the next agenda. So I guess that'd be the question, am I asking, are we not.
I feel like if we should put this on the agenda, it'll open it up again.
I think personally, because of the correspondence, we should at least put it on a work session. I don't think we're quite ready to put it on a hearing of any kind because we've got to give all kinds of information.
I feel that because it went to the board's response and passed, you know, despite this fact, it only passed by thirteen folks and it did pass. They all think that it's not appropriate for us in the council to do anything further. I think that if the people in the community don't want it, then that should come out, it should be an uprising on the community. Not with the few layers, but rather with, you know.
I don't think that's, that's the concern. I think the concern is the fact that the process where that one specific site has problems. And how it got created and allowed. Just that site, it doesn't say we're disallowing stories in town. We're just saying that that one site seems to have some problems. I think that's how we should discuss. And that's been brought up fairly clearly, that either it's our comprehensive plan or some process details. Tammy's going to chime in a lot of those.
I'm going to say that the reason that that site had problems is because of its application, not because of where it's located. It was because of the way the application was done. And that seems to be something that would be decided on our, our staff.
You're talking about two different things, though. You're talking about the vote, but then the time, place and manner wasn't a vote. That was your guys' decision on what you made for the time, place and manner.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to talk about it, at least in a work session. The whole question about whether it violates the comprehensive plan or not. If it does, it does. If it doesn't, it doesn't. We, we, I think we do owe it to people who contacted us to have a discussion about that. I feel like we're just kind of shutting them down. I don't feel comfortable with that.
Particularly the argument that the application itself may or may not have been proposed by it for many information that upon its face would have provided for the denial of that being.
So we're going to have to ask Tammy to chime in on this. Either in our reports, we can have it during a work session if she can't make it. Or do a special work session after a session, after a regular session so that when she's here, that might work better. Is anybody okay with that?
I'm hesitant.
Where is the status?
Well, I mean, I'm not saying that, literally, I just feel that decisions don't get made well.
That one started hot.
I actually would feel more comfortable doing it.
Yeah, it's staying so late.
I was actually kind of off the topic here, but at the conference, to find out that a lot of cities have a deadline. And they stop at ten o'clock no matter what.
What are your readings?
Yeah, no matter what's going on, which means you always have to be going on special meetings. But that's just kind of a lot.
Mark, where is the status currently of the situation at the location we're talking about?
They have a building permit for some interior remodeling. That work hasn't received its final inspection yet, so it's still underway. They have their OLCC application, as far as I know, is still pending. I haven't received any indication that it's been approved yet. They've been in communication with the actual potential permit holders, not the building owner. The permit holders, they communicated with me two or three weeks ago and kind of gave them a list of things they're still going to have to accomplish before we can sign that building permit or, excuse me, that business license. They've not applied for the business license yet, so I think that is where we are.
Have the tenants, have they made the.
We haven't inspected it yet, but I believe that, I've been told by the owner that they're out now. Yeah, the owners, the ritzies have been in touch with me right from the beginning on this. The actual store owners have just got in touch with me recently.
Would it be appropriate for us to have the owner and the applicant at a workstation?
Well, the applicants are, they're applying.
You can tell from Nancy's face, no.
Well, I'm just, I'm just concerned that turns into a hearing. And we may not want to do that if it does become a hearing.
Yeah, you're an appellate body on some of this, so you've got to be careful about contacting potential parties to that prior to a hearing.
I think, I think the question is, for the most part, is, is it part, I mean, is it something in our, is there something in our comprehensive plan? I mean, at least that's where we start, maybe, is let's take a look at the comprehensive plan and see if this, what we, what a former council decided really does coincide with the comprehensive plan. Is there any, do we want to change that in some way? And then also to take a look at the OLCC license application and see if there's something we can do about that.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm at the original application, neglecting to address faculty requirements of residents above. A lot of things that seem to be less than clear, but I'd like to carry on.
We can check with Tammy's availability and see when she can, comes for a work session.
Pretty much, I know we have.
Yes. Maybe she definitely has Tammy involved in that.
So, I covered that. Anybody else have? Okay, clear. Thank you.